That was very important, so bear with us. Okay. Let's start off, I'm sorry. Start the meeting, Select Board meeting, September 10, 2019. We are returning from executive session. And first, let's have some announcements from the Select Board. Mr. Franklin, do you want to start?
Sure, I've got two announcements. One, I want to draw attention to the fact that Brookline Day is coming up on Sunday, December 22nd, from 11:00 to 3:00. Laura Zanderson, there's additional details available at BrooklineDay.org. And then my second announcement is about an upcoming celebration on September 25th at the Veterans Post, just down the street, at 386 Washington Street, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. We'll be celebrating the certain MRC volunteers and all they do for our community. We're going to celebrate two individuals and then two community partners. Again, upcoming September 25th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM, at the Veterans Post, 386 Washington Street, here in Brookline.
Mr. Francois.
Sure thing. Brookline residents, keep your eyes open for a park recreation and athletic field survey that will arrive in some resident mailboxes within the next week. The town of Brookline has commissioned a Parks and Recreation Community Survey as part of an effort to help update and shape the town's parks, recreation, and open space strategic master plan that will be utilized by the town to guide planning, facility development, programs, and services for the next five to 20 years. A random sampling of residents has been invited to take a survey, and these responses will provide statistically valid results, my favorite kind.
Any other, yes, please.
I've got a couple of announcements. The Brookline Senior Center will be hosting an event on Tuesday, October 15th, at 2:00 until 3:30. It's a very special event. It's the fourth annual celebration of becoming 100 in Brookline.
Wow.
And they're looking for centenarians to be honored. So if you are over 99 and on your way to becoming 100, you can contact the Senior Center. And the number is 730-22770. We are, the reason that October 15th was picked is that that is the 100th birthday of Agnes Rogers. And Agnes is a very longtime Brookline resident and very, very active senior who did many, many great things on behalf of seniors for this town and for all of us. So it's my pleasure to talk about her because she's so fantastic. And she will be honored, as well as other centenarians, on October 15th. So I hope you'll be able to come. The other thing I wanted to say is that the Brookline, that the Age Friendly Cities Committee, the Select Board's Age Friendly City Committee, is holding a meeting with Dr. Swani Jet as its principal speaker about health and climate and how climate is affecting our health. And this will be on October 22nd. Usually our meetings are at 2:00. I don't have the venue quite yet, and I'll announce that closer to when we get to the time, but I just wanted you to get it on your calendars if you're interested in coming. And it's obviously an issue that affects many of us, is how climate change is affecting our health.
Great. Any others before I get into my four announcements? Okay, starting off, we have a celebration coming up for the groundbreaking for two-life communities, first Brookline Community at 370 Harvard Street. This is going to be on Friday, September 13th, at 1:30 PM. I will be there, maybe saying a few words, if that will entice you to come. Followed with a reception at Kahilath Israel. Space is limited, so reservations are required by calling Kayla Barry. If you want to take out your pencil, it's 617-912-8466. Secondly, you see on the, on the board, on the screen there, pictures of some benches. These are pictures taken by Frank Carroll, who I don't believe is in the audience. But earlier this year, Frank Carroll discussed with me putting together a warrant article to increase the availability of benches around town for people, especially elderly, to rest on while out on healthful walks. Instead of a warrant article, he worked with the Department of Public Works to come up with some locations for benches, and they have been installed. And these are just some pictures of those benches, which I'm showing you just to prove that they're out there. We don't have them on our website or anything, but, you know, this, this is something that I think is, I'd like to commend Frank for pulling this together because, as, as he put it, "We're encouraging people to walk for health reasons, particularly the elderly." Matter of fact, especially the elderly. And because the elderly are not as strong as maybe some of us were at one point, benches are important ways in which they can engage in that healthful activity. So this is an important initiative, and I want to commend Frank for being behind this. So, thank you. Thirdly, Select Board person Heather Hamilton and myself participated in an exciting, important 40th anniversary event for Boston House, the former Ronald McDonald House over on Kent Street. And we presented the proclamation that the Select Board approved last week. I mentioned, and I hope Mr. Franco doesn't get offended by this, but I did mention, and it was greatly appreciated, Mr. Franco's story about participating in events at Ronald McDonald House and being, or having children from Ronald McDonald House who were there for extended periods of time and who came to the Lawrence School for their education. Mr. Franklin, you may recall, mentioned this last week, and I noted that in my remarks, and people appreciate it because it shows a strong connection between this important institution in our community and our schools and the community in general. So I think that was very well received. Finally, on Friday, Mr. Kleckner and I, along with Chief Lipson, Superintendent Morgan, and Lieutenant Derek Hayes, met with NEDA, preparatory to the community meeting that they will hold on September 24th, to discuss neighborhood complaints and review the steps taken to solve the problems those complaints indicated, and additional steps that may be needed with respect to those complaints. We also discussed social equity responsibilities of cannabis establishments and steps that they are taking, as NEDA, NEDA is taking, and that maybe will be taken in the future with respect to social equity issues, or social equity programming. And we also talked about having a public meeting of this board with NEDA to discuss primarily the issue of parking, which in their, in their rules were, is where required to have such a meeting to discuss parking issues and how they're resolved. And I assume we'll also be discussing other issues that come up. I just want to say, though, that, you know, the town, and I commend the police department as well as Mr. Kleckner and town departments, in terms of identifying important issues that arise from the establishment of these cannabis establishments, and taking direct and very helpful steps to address those problems. We've done that, it's not going to solve all the problems, but we've taken huge steps towards ensuring that we minimize the extent possible of the impact of cannabis establishments in our town, which our town voted for more than 60%, as did the rest of the Commonwealth. So with that, those are my announcements. And next, we have a public comment. And I have three, oh, four, and one person erased their name. Ruth Ann Snyder, Ruth Ann, do you still want to be erased? Apparently she left. So first, first comment from Susan Park.
Susan Park's group.
Well, we only let one person speak.
Oh, so there are four of us who are going to take 15 minutes, is that okay?
It's in different orders, but we all.
Can we have three?
I'm about Susan.
Okay. What about the other people on this list? Linda Schreier, Arthur, Arthur Bronstein? Bronstein, oh Bronstein. Are they in your group? Okay, okay, go ahead.
So it's the four of us.
But it's 15 minutes total for public comment.
Right, 15 minutes total.
Yeah.
So is this, is this good?
Yep.
Okay, I'm a little short, I'm going to, okay. So my name's Carrie Anne Tester, I live on Walnut Street, and I'm here to support the Susan's group who is going to speak specifically to the Coolidge Corner retail shop that's coming in. Because I live so close to the, the NEDA facility on Route 9, they're in my backyard, and I currently service their free parking lot, which is awesome. So just wanted to give you a little, to set the stage by giving a little picture of what life has been like. We moved to Walnut Street in June, so a little over a year ago, until, I think they opened in March for retail, so they were medicinal until March. Things were quiet, things were peaceful, we really enjoyed living there. We used to live right across the street, so it was very loud, very noisy, it was, it was much quieter on Walnut Street. Then in March, everything changed. We've seen all kinds of things, and Susan asked me to kind of give some examples of some of the things that we've seen, and I think you mentioned that there have been some problems, some complaints, probably a lot of them coming from me and my neighbors. So three kind of main categories, crime, litter vandalism, you can see the, the sign that says no public consumption has been defaced, the big X through the no, public urination, public use, out-of-state transport of the product, which is against the law, diversion. I have seen people open their bags and give the product to people right there on the street. My main complaint, though, is the cars. I'm a pedestrian advocate and a cyclist, and Walnut Street has just been taken over by the cars. They're open until 10:00 at night, which means that until 10:00 at night, we have speeding, honking, three-way turns, headlights in my kids' windows, people can't parallel parks, they go up on the curb, drop their big trucks down, bang, car doors slamming, beep 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 beep, till 10:15 at night. Every night, seven days a week, they're only closed two days a year. They're not closed for, I think it's Christmas and Thanksgiving are going to be closed, so we never get a break, every day, all day, 9:00 AM on the weekends, 10:00 AM on the weekdays. So there's that, the parking, the noise, the traffic, the crime. Just a few stories, because I just want to take a couple of minutes so that they can have the vast majority of it. I once had, I was backing into my driveway, a woman, NEDA customer, came up with her little white bag, which my kids now know, the white bag people, came up to me and said that I had scraped her car when I was pulling into my driveway. I went out and looked, didn't see anything. My kids are like standing there going, what's happening? People park in front of people's driveways. There was a guy who moved a parking barrier so that he could just run over to NEDA, and one of my neighbors had run up to him and asked him to move it back, got in a confrontation. So it puts us in a very awkward position. Somebody parked so close behind me that I couldn't open my trunk once. Handicap parking, there's a handicap spot there, and there's about to be another one, and we have to call the police all the time. If you look at the logs, we call several times a day because people park in that spot. The whole intersection at Route 9, my kids go to Pierce, so they cross Route 9 every day, twice a day to go to Pierce. And it's a nightmare. It's, it's a nightmare, that whole intersection, because the pickup-drop-off is right there with Uber and Lyft and taxis, and it's right there on Route 9. So when cars are pulling in and pulling out, I know there are two officers there, I really wish those officers were at the intersection because that's where the problem happens. So when there's coming and going from the drop-off in front of the dispenser at the retail shop, all the cars in the intersection get backed up. So then the kids have to weave their way through the cars, through the crosswalks. The crosswalk signal turns at the same time as the green light for the cars to go, which means that the kids are trying to cross, and cars don't know they have a crossing signal. My daughter's been honked at once by a guy in a pickup truck. She was almost run over by someone coming down Washington Street, turning on Route 9. Right in front of me, I reached out for her, and if she had been two feet in front of where she was, she would have been hit. So it's a very dangerous intersection. That's it. It's just, it's, it's not like anything, any one thing that's really impacting our lives. It's death by a thousand cuts. It's just like, it was okay, it was great, then it was kind of irritating, and now it's just like, I'm really angry, and a lot of my neighbors are really angry. We're just tired of it, and we wish there were tighter regulation. And we hope that the things that are brought up tonight, the suggestions, we know the host agreement's done, we know that there's a lot of things that are done, and a lot of ships have sailed. We're hoping that we can get a little more concrete, have a little more accountability written into some of these agreements. Based on what we're, we know where it's, it's growing, and growing pains are real, and we understand that, we want progress. I voted for legalization, I'm not against pot. I just want it regulated just as tightly as liquor is, and alcohol, which is, that's how I think of it. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today regarding the opening of a marijuana dispensary in Coolidge Corner. I'm Lydia Schreier, I'm a pediatrician and adolescent medicine specialist at Boston Children's Hospital. I conduct marijuana use research and provide care to adolescents who use marijuana. I'm also a Brookline resident and a mother of two teenagers who attend Brookline Public Schools. My children frequent Coolidge Corner to shop and eat on their own and with their friends. So I'm going to focus my comments on, on what I know best, which is the effects of marijuana on children and adolescents, to help us all think about as dispensaries open in Brookline, how we can better take care of that public health. There's no debate that marijuana is harmful for children and adolescents. Children and adolescents who use marijuana are at high risk for school performance, use of other substances, and a host of cognitive and psychological problems. In short, if you take a developing brain and expose it to a toxin, it can change in negative ways. Over the past one to two decades, as states have legalized medical and recreational marijuana, adolescents' perceptions of harm from marijuana use have declined, and their perceptions of ease of access to marijuana have increased. At the same time, potency in street marijuana and availability of high potency legal cannabis products has increased. In Massachusetts, legalization of medical marijuana has been followed by 140% increase in reports to poison control of cannabis exposure in children, and especially adolescents, particularly exposure to edible and concentrated cannabis products. In Colorado, legalization of recreational marijuana was associated with increased poison control calls and hospitalizations for exposures in children. We've learned a lot from our neighbors in Colorado and Washington with their experiences with legalization ahead of us. Legalization is also associated with increases in driving under the influence of cannabis, of particular concern among young drivers, and increases in cannabis-involved car crashes. Importantly, exposure to marijuana advertisements is associated with greater intention to use marijuana, actual marijuana use, and negative consequences for marijuana use, with effects seen in both middle schoolers and high schoolers. And young adults who live in neighborhoods with more medical marijuana dispensaries use marijuana more frequently than their peers and have more positive views about the drug. Couple of additional points. Proximity between schools and dispensaries does not seem as important in predicting adolescents' marijuana use as exposures to advertisements and exposure to peers and adults using marijuana. In other words, it's not enough to just measure distance between dispensaries and schools as the mean of protecting children and adolescents from harms related to marijuana. Another point is that effects of marijuana legalization on young people may be delayed. So adolescents who are exposed to marijuana legalization may have higher marijuana use and less progress in their education over time, not just in adolescence, but into young adulthood. In fact, many of you have seen the recently released statistics that college students are using marijuana at the highest rates in 35 years. So the horse is already out of the barn, right? Medical and recreational marijuana has been legalized in Massachusetts. I'm not here to debate the law, but rather advocate for the health of Brookline's children and adolescents. Our shared goals must be to prevent pediatric poisonings, delay initiation of use, and prevent harm from both use and prevent heavy use in young people as a result of the growing presence of marijuana in our community. A medical, sorry, a marijuana dispensary in the heart of Coolidge Corner, a family-dense residential area, and arguably the most popular business district among young people in Brookline, runs counter to these goals. I'd like to close by noting that any decisions regarding medical, regarding marijuana dispensaries in Brookline needs to be made with consideration not only of the particulars of a single host agreement, we can't be picking at this problem agreement by agreement, but also consider the broader public health impact, and couple consideration of the single agreement with actions on a number of fronts, including regulation on marijuana advertisements, enforcement of Massachusetts law regarding prohibiting public use of marijuana, interventions and campaigns to prevent driving under the influence or riding with a driver under the influence of marijuana, educational campaigns for adults regarding secure storage of their cannabis products, and use practices that minimize the risk of exposure for children and adolescents, and educational campaigns about harmfulness of marijuana use in young people, for parents, for kids, school personnel, and healthcare providers. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and there are folders in front of you, and in those folders are the reports that we've been referring to through the evening, and please enjoy the bottle of water as well. My name is Susan Park.
As long as the town didn't put that on our desk, we're okay.
Oh, no.
We're trying to get away from single-use.
We're not allowed to.
Yeah, we're not allowed to. So now I'll drink it.
That was from me and our friends, so. And thank you for, to our neighbors for joining us tonight. My name is Susan Park, I live in Coolidge Corner, and I'm a mom to three beautiful, three beautiful daughters. I'm a wife and schoolteacher. Thank you, once again, everyone, for, just for caring about our community and our children. I will start with a quote from Dr. Nancy Bohm, who has practiced clinical psychology for 25 years. She said, quote, "It is unnerving to recognize that in the past year, the self-reported use of marijuana in any form has increased most in the age group of 12 to 17 years. This trend is most likely due to the general belief that the drug is harmless, and to the fact that it is ever more easily accessible in forms appealing to children such as edibles. Our concern tonight is the negative impact the Pier 1 import location will have on our youth and neighborhood. Public health, public safety, and quality of life will suffer. A body of research, recent scholarship documents, the risks that were unknown in 2016 when we voted for legislation. This new scholarship overwhelmingly show that pot shops create problems that the host agreement is inadequate to mitigate, as it was done three years ago, and new research has been found over the summer. It will be irresponsible to move ahead with the host agreement in its current form in light of the scientific data in front of our eyes. A pot shop nearby encourages use, it's a no-brainer. On June 17, 2019, Rand Corporation published a study that found that young adults who live in neighborhoods with medical marijuana dispensaries or use marijuana more frequently than their peers. 3,500-plus students walk past Pier 1 frequently, and the lines will arouse their curiosity. There is a big disconnect. Marijuana is perceived as safe, but the science says it is not, especially for children, as we heard from the doctor. On August 16, 2019, the Journal of the American Medical Association published a study on children 0 to 19 years old, showing a 140% increase in emergency room visits in Massachusetts since legalization. 140% pediatric cannabis poisoning increased despite childproof packaging and warning labels. For kids 0 to 4, edibles were the source of the poisoning. The form factors of some edibles is gummies and candies, which appeal to children. It is morally inconceivable that edibles can be sold when Brookline made menthol cigarettes illegal to sell in order to protect our children. The Centers of Disease Control and Prevention found that 75% of the children exposed to guardians secondhand smoke show traces of THC in their urine. Secondhand smoke puts them at risk of severe respiratory diseases and can hinder growth in their lungs, and they will get the secondhand smoke. The U.S. Surgeon General made a recent public warning emphasizing the health risks of marijuana in adolescents and during pregnancy last week. The National Institute on Drug Abuse says, contrary to common belief, marijuana is addictive. Recent data suggests that 30% of those who use marijuana may have marijuana use disorder, and people who begin using before the age of 18 are four to seven times more likely to develop a marijuana use disorder. For kids, their brains are still developing until 25 years old, and the prefrontal cortex does not reach full maturity until their early twenties, let alone their eight points of IQ loss. Over the weekend, it was plastered all over the news from CNN and Washington Post, and it reported five deaths connected to the e-cigarettes and vaping with pot. There are more than 450 serious but non-fatal incidents that have been recorded in the last few weeks. The New England Journal of Medicine writes, "These cases represent a new and newly recognized and worrisome cluster of pulmonary disease." So a nearby pot shop will exacerbate all these problems, and all the research is coming out, and the host agreement was made a year ago. How can we forget about this? How can we just ignore it? Crime is also going to be a factor. A new study by researchers at the University of Colorado Denver in February 19 this year, 2019, shows that neighborhoods with one or more pot outlets saw crime rates increase over those of neighborhoods without commercial marijuana activity. Except for murder, a marijuana outlet was associated with a statistically significant increase in crime and disorder, including robbery and aggravated assaults. They also found that crime takes place in the neighborhood, not in front of the store, but it affects the neighborhood indeed. Also troubling is the finding from a 2017 National Institute of Health study, which demonstrated that marijuana use was positively associated with physical partner abuse. Lastly, I'd like to say that the quality of life is also affected, as we heard from Kat. Carrie Anne, town parks are at risk. Neighbors complain that Emerson Park is frequented by pot smokers who ignore the law against public consumption. We worry this will engulf Griggs and St. Mark's Parks. Litter, parking, and lines are a problem at NEDA, and will be worse in Coolidge Corner. Pets are at risk and can die from pot ingestion. We have someone here who had to take her dog twice to the ER because of this, this thing that I'm talking about. The studies point in the same direction. Pot is a problem, and we need to limit its potential for damage. We recommend amending the host agreement, and as Carrie Anne mentioned earlier, we know, you've already told us, it's, it's a done deal, you know, you've told us, but how can we ignore all the findings as responsible citizens and moms, and as a teacher, and as a doctor, Girl Scout cheerleader, and citizens who pay taxes? So we come to you tonight, we come to you tonight, and we ask you to really reconsider just adding some changes to, to the restrictions, so it doesn't hurt. just adding some changes to the restrictions so it doesn't hurt the square of Coolidge Corner for all these kids. We're asking for no sales of edibles, to prohibit the sales in child-oriented form factors in light of the JAMA report and the 140% increase of cannabis poisoning in kids, so not to allow edibles. We're asking for no sale of vaping pens in light of the New England Journal Medicine Warning and the outbreak that came out last week, killing five people. And mind you, they've been saying, no one has died from cannabis, but that's not true. We're going to find out more, more will. We're asking for no lines, sell by appointment only, like Newton, so the 100-person lines we see at NEDA are avoided, reducing traffic and sidewalk congestion. Please consider putting the main door on Webster Street in light of the Rand study that dispensaries will increase use in our children. This will also keep the sidewalk and alleyway clear. We're asking for shorter opening hours, start with less, then grow to more as Sanctuary proves itself, instead of the other way around. We're asking for security details to keep parks from becoming havens for pot smokers in cooperation with BPD, with the police department. We're also asking for addition of at least one person of color from a historically disadvantaged population, and one woman to be the executive team to meet the diversity commitment. And we're also asking, in light of the epidemic that happened last week, that if an epidemic breaks out and it's linked to Sanctuary and the cannabis use, that the shop be shut down. Coolidge Corner is our home, not a laboratory. We don't want a weak host agreement or weak regulations. These amendments are proposed based on two things, the scientific research, which tells us the risks are real and consequential, and the common sense that God gave us that tells us to face problems and reassess and deal with them when we learn about them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, oh, I'm sorry, one more? Apologize. I apologize.
No, thank you very much. That was pretty compelling. I don't think I had much to add to that, but since I'm on the list, I'll say a few words anyway. I'd like to start by giving my name, Arthur Brunson, I'm a resident of Coolidge Corner, and I'd like to thank the Select Board for giving us this opportunity to speak. I'd also like to ask if Sanctuary has a representative here tonight?
They weren't asked to come because you're not on the agenda.
I did invite them.
No.
So, they're not. But I do want to address them directly, and I'll send them a copy of this, and I'd like to say that I wish them no ill will. None of us do, and in fact, we wish them success with their business. But we do want to remind them that we don't want them in Coolidge Corner, and we would like to say that even if we can't stop them from opening the store, before it opens, as Susan said, we're asking the town for stronger controls, in particular in the form of an amendment to the host agreement. We ask for provisions, including the ones that she mentioned, banning edibles, appointment-only sales. Once they're in place, we certainly expect that the community and we, as the neighborhood, will do everything possible to enforce them, be vigilant about it. We also recognize that this may affect the viability of Sanctuary's business. And my comment to them, it's always been a risk to come into a town like Coolidge Corner, and it's their decision, and the decision of their investors that don't want to continue down this path. To the Select Board, I'd like to reinforce the point that was made before, that the experience with NEDA, many scholarly studies, many of which preexisted 2016, many of which have come since then, and the compelling statement of Dr. Schreier, all show that the host agreement is not up to the job, it's not a sufficient enforcement tool for protecting the quality of life, public health, and public safety of the residents in Coolidge Corner. Many of the problems of having a pot shop, and they're serious problems, have been documented since the vote for legalization and since the signing of the host agreement. What's interesting about the host agreement is that it gives Sanctuary the maximum latitude from the outset. It can open with long lines, 93 people, it has permission to sell edibles despite the toxic and frankly moral and ethical implications of selling edibles, and longer operating hours, which can disturb the neighborhood. The approach is backwards, and we recommend starting with a minimum latitude, add lines, new products, and longer hours only when the store is proven itself. Time is of the essence. That's why we're asking you to tell Sanctuary that they must amend the host agreement before they can open, and that the amendment must include input from the community, we've heard good things, and it be the framework that protects the residents. I was here in an earlier session, I heard the Sanctuary team speak, they spoke with their goodwill, they made promises, and all of those are fine, but they're not enforceable, and more importantly, they don't survive a change of control. If we wait, the town won't have the leverage to negotiate an amendment after the store opens. And if there's a change of control, as there was with NEDA, the town will face an owner with deep pockets and legal resources to fight any attempts to mitigate its damage. Goodwill and promises mean very little now, and don't mean nothing after a change of control. This is the window of opportunity to align to the letter of the law, and our expectations of Sanctuary and their promises. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Should I just add one thing that I'd like to say?
Real quick.
One sentence, one sentence.
Thank you.
This is from the Foster Global article. NEDA typically draws 2,500 customers a day, making one of the busiest. NEDA typically draws 2,500 customers a day, making one of the busiest cannabis stores in America. Nationwide pot stores are 121, so we do 20 times the number of customers as the average in America, because we're open so long and there's no appointment necessary.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, our next item is question of accepting a grant in the amount of $240,966 from the Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division, to fund LED lighting projects. Ms. Lynn?
Hi, I'm Zoe Lynn, I'm the Town Sustainability Program Administrator.
People are leaving, why don't we look at them a chance to move by?
There's somebody behind me that is asking for one quick comment.
Okay, real quick, 30 seconds.
So, actually, two quick comments, but I promise I'll do them in 30 seconds. Nathan Spritz, Precinct 16, town meeting member, Payson Road, and father of two kids at school. Number one, yeah, yeah, number one. There was a group, the Bloomberg Charities and the Somebody for Tobacco-Free Kids, is sponsoring some work where they're trying to get lots of communities to ban flavors like we just did in the last town meeting. They also are furthering that work by funding some studies to see how effective banned flavors are in actually banning flavors among kids in communities. I would like to see us actually apply for some of those funds so that we can find out whether or not the flavor ban is effective, and if it's not, how we can make it more effective. That's number one. The other item is actually Gerald Austin. I'd like to urge all of you to make a reasonable settlement offer to Mr. Austin, to get negotiations started, trying to get federal required mediation, and trying to get the various individuals released from the lawsuit. Thank you.
You're talking to the choir, need to talk to the other side. Ms. Lynn? And I want to just mention that we really appreciate your work in getting this large grant for energy efficiency lighting. It's, I mean, it looks like a huge amount to me.
It is a good-sized grant.
In terms of grants that we usually get, so.
Yes, it is a good-sized grant, thank you for recognizing that. It wasn't just me, though, we worked very closely with the Building Department, Charlie Simmons, who's here behind me, the Director of Public Buildings, Mark Sacco, if I'm saying his last name correctly, our Energy Systems Manager, and it was a team effort, and we're hoping you're going to accept it.
Any questions, comments? Hearing that, I guess no one objects to this big grant.
I think we are under a press embargo until next week, technically, but they do need this contract back, and since you guys have to give me permission to execute the contract, hopefully this won't be considered breaking that embargo, but don't publicly make this available deliberately until we pass the embargo next Tuesday.
Okay.
I think the ship has sailed.
It was televised?
They're not much.
It is televised, but I think that's a little different than going to the press, and we'll hope that they recognize that.
We won't go to the press.
I mean, they want the contract back, so we need to.
Except the press looking at PIG.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So what additional steps will the town need to take in order to get the rebates and other things from the utilities?
So Charlie can, yeah, Charlie can speak to those details.
Charlie Simmons, Director of Buildings. So the next steps would be to award purchase orders and contracts to the Energy Conservation Company, they do the work. We would pay them, the state would come out and do an audit. They don't audit everything, they just like to see what we've done, and they sign off on that.
And then we get the rebates?
Yes.
Okay, so it's $240,000 plus rebates?
Well, the $240,000 includes rebates, the actual cost of project is almost double that with the rebates.
Good, great. Any other questions? Move of approval of the accepting a grant in the amount of $240,966. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Thank you. And chair votes aye, I'm sorry.
And so does that vote just now allows Mel to execute this with me? Is that what happens tomorrow?
So the board just voted that we can execute the document, so it's all taken care of now. We'll execute it tonight after the meeting.
Okay, is that correct, Mel, that this will be signed off? Or, I'm not challenging, I don't know, I wasn't challenging, there's a lot of documents that I wasn't sure if was in your packet, and I just, so those all need to be filled out, and I don't, there's signatories, it needs to be notarized, there's a lot of pieces, I just didn't know.
Why don't we say this? I move that we authorize Mel Klachner to sign necessary grant documents on behalf of the board. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you for the safety net.
You're all set.
Excellent, thanks.
Okay, question of accepting a grant in the amount of, well, this is a big grant too, Chief Sullivan, $146,328 from the Assistance to Firefighter Grant for Professional Development Training. Very important grant, and you'll tell us how important and how it's going to be used.
I will indeed. Good evening, John Sullivan, Fire Chief. I stand before you tonight, ask you to accept the highly competitive Assistance to Firefighter Grant. We were fortunate enough, again, in this fiscal year, fiscal year 18 of the federal fiscal year, to be awarded $146,327.27 for professional development for our middle managers, our company officers, which are the backbone of the fire department. Those are the folks that are out on the line and responding to the calls and interacting with the citizens of the town of Brookline, as well as supervising directly the men and women of the department. This grant will allow us to bring our fire officers up to certification level for the NFPA certification, 1421 fire officer standard professional qualification, and also 1021 fire instructor professional qualifications. And the irony of the way that this works is that the NFPA recognizes that in order to be an effective supervisor, you have to be a mentor, a coach, and a teacher. And so in order to be able to sit for the Fire Officer One course, you actually have to become a Fire Instructor One first. That will facilitate your ability to perform company drills, as well as to present in the academy and in front of the public in very important pieces like our public education sector as well. So we are very pleased to have been awarded this grant. There is a 10% match, and we will take that from our existing budget.
Any questions? So as I understand this training, it includes the type of training that middle managers do, especially in the fire department, to help intervene with staff members who are under stress and as a result may have the usual conflicts and, not conflicts, but usual difficulties between people that occur in those situations, and this training will give those middle managers the skills to actually step in and help work those things out through, as well.
That is true. One of the modules in the Fire Instructor One curriculum is on personnel management, so that is something that is vitally important in the role of the company officer, to be able to mitigate any issues at the company level before they become, you know, something that's bigger than what it needs to be. And so this particular curriculum focuses on that mid-level management and their ability to both manage the fire ground as well as the personnel assigned to them, and customer service as well.
Any other questions, comments? I move approval of the acceptance of the grant in the amount of $146,328 from Assistance to Firefighter Grant program. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have one, two, three, three temporary all kinds beverages sales. Can we vote on them together? Any objections?
Yeah, I think we can do it on the best fashion.
Police have okayed all of them, correct?
Yes, the police have reviewed all the application materials and seen no reason to deny any of these temporary alcohol licenses.
Okay, the first one is to the Hellenic Association of Boston for a birthday party on October 5, 2019, at 162 Goddard Avenue. Second one is, well, first is a temporary all kinds of beverage sales. Second one is a temporary wine and malt beverages sales license to Penny Packers Find Food for a Wedding, or to be held, and I assume reception, to be held on Saturday, September 14. I assume reception because I don't think you have liquor at weddings, but maybe I'm Actually, then question of approving the all kinds beverages sales license to Pine Manor College for a wedding on November 10, 2019, and a 50th anniversary party on December 6, 2019. As Mr. Franco mentioned, the police have given their okay to all of these temporary licenses. Any questions? No? Move of approval, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. You all set?
Yes, we're having technical difficulties.
I don't know if I can do this. Okay, question of approving the application of alternate manager Joseph Jeanette, Jason Anthony Knight, Steve Arduano, and Nicole Tierney for Trader Joe's. Anyone from Trader Joe's here? I don't think they have to be, but just checking.
We generally don't ask that, yeah, the alternate manager applicants to come.
Sometimes they just want to get out and come and be entertained by the Select Board. Any questions?
I'll just offer a comment. I appreciate that Trader Joe's is diligent about updating their alternate managers, which is something that this board likes to see, given our local restrictions on the service of alcohols. Thank you to Trader Joe's for keeping on top of us.
So I move approval on favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, next, library personnel. Our librarian. Question of approving the filling of the following four vacancies within the library department. Library Business Manager, Library Assistant Youth Services, Librarian Branch Supervisor, who I understand is going to another town, Library Assistant Youth Services. Tell us about please.
Sarah Sloman, Library Director. I have four vacancies I'm seeking authorization for. The Library Business Manager position, I'm, I'm not sure if you want to hear a little bit about them, but the runs all of the, gets all the bills paid and makes sure that the books are balanced and places all the orders for libraries, so we have library cards and books. So that's very essential. The Branch Supervisor for Coolidge Corner, obviously the biggest branch in the state, so we need somebody over there keeping that beautiful new building on the upright. And one of our library assistants in the Youth Services Department at Brookline Village has left to move home to Europe, so we need to fill her position. And there's a position, Library Assistant Two at Coolidge Corner that needs to be filled as well.
Okay, any questions? All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you, I'll have a nice day.
Thank you. Chief Lipson, so you have a few employees to approve and change around.
We do. Good evening, Andrew Lipson, Chief of Police. I'm here before the board tonight to request filling 11 vacancies within the police department. Eight of those positions are for police officer positions. I'm requesting the authority to promote a police lieutenant, a police sergeant, as well as fill a emergency 911 dispatcher position in the Public Safety Dispatch Center.
Okay, and the eight police officers are going to be selected from names off the civil service list?
Yes.
For the record, it's for the civil service list. And the, I guess, question regarding the police lieutenant and police sergeant, are there black and Hispanic and women officers within the pipeline for those positions? And not necessarily this one, but any future ones?
No.
Is that something that you can't really tell until, until civil service?
For the promotions or for the new hires?
Promotions.
For the promotions, there was a civil service promotional exam in October of 2018. There are candidates on that eligible list. All of the candidates on the list, civil service list for promotion are white males.
Okay. Hopefully that will change at some point. Any, pardon me, any other questions?
Just take me through kind of the timeline. We, let's say we, this passes and whatnot, how long between now and when we can see the new hires and the promotions go into effect?
So the new hires are, there's extensive application and background process. Then the selected candidates, we need to find an academy for them. Prelimarily, we have an academy in January that we're eyeing to send them to. The academy lasts approximately six months, so it would be sometime before they actually come out and hit the streets and are sworn in before you in Brookline. For the promotions, we request a list from civil service. There's a two-week period where eligible candidates can come in and sign the list. When they do, we conduct interviews and so that's a quicker turnaround, that's three to four weeks. And the public safety dispatch position, we have a candidate in mind. We did interviews for two previous openings and there was a third highly qualified candidate that we would be seeking to hire for that position.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Move of approval of filling the vacancies in the police department. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel Recreation, question of authorizing the filling of the following vacancy within the Recreation Department, Recreation Leader Two, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening, members of the board. Lee Jackson, the Director of Recreation. I'm here tonight to request your authority and authorization to hire for our Rec Leader Two position. This is our Sports Manager position within the department and it's a fairly extensive position, the biggest program in recreation actually. And for instance, right now we have 900 kids playing soccer, so this person helps to make sure that risk management is in place, training is in place, and the program runs smoothly. So tonight I request your authorization to hire.
Any questions? Hearing none. I guess I have a question. I'm looking for, for this on my screen. Should be on page 148. I guess my question is. Oh, okay. Yep, got it, okay. So, excuse me, Mr. Franco. A younger generation who knows how to handle this stuff.
I serve multiple roles here.
Not necessarily.
Okay, so we have on our authorization to hire form, suggested sources for specialized recruitment advertising. Can I urge you, as I think I've mentioned to you, that you include local community colleges on the specialized recruitment efforts? You know, we have all these really great community colleges who probably can provide both diversity as well as local residents who live in this general area, as well as incredibly well-trained in their particular area. So I just, you know, for the record, I just want to make sure that you take advantage of opportunities to use that resource for your hires too.
I will take every opportunity, thank you.
Any other questions? Move of approval, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Newberry College Zoning Committee. First of all, before we start. Okay, thank you. So last week, the select board established a new committee and a charge to evaluate the proposed redevelopment of the Newberry College campus. This evening, we recommend that you appoint a slate of candidates to the committee that will be proposed by select board member Heller. After several weeks of anticipation, I'm pleased to be able to publicly disclose that Welltower, an experienced and successful senior care developer, has officially closed on its deal with Newberry College and is now the owner of the campus in Brookline. Welltower has identified the east side of the campus as its development site and has offered to sell to the town the west side of the property. The west side is the side of the property adjacent to Fisher Hill Park. Welltower has expressed a desire for the town meeting necessary to approve the zoning and related actions to be held sometime in early March 2020. The town will make every reasonable effort to meet that schedule and has encouraged Welltower to expedite its own processes. As a result, Welltower has committed to meet with the Fisher Hill neighborhood on September 26 and with the town's new zoning committee on October 3. More information on these and other meetings, Welltower's proposal, and the potential land acquisition by the town of the west side of the campus will be available in the coming weeks and months. This is the beginning of a exciting process that will hopefully culminate in a special town meeting in early March 2020. Ms. Heller?
Thank you. So I'm pleased to tell you all about the committee that we put together. There's a list that you have in your packet, it's item number 10. We have, we strive to get a number of people who are in the neighborhood but not legal butters, for obvious reasons, who have expertise as architects, attorneys, some, an urban planner, some county members from other neighborhoods, from members of the advisory committee, a member of the building commission, two members of the school committee, two members of the select board. So I'll read the names, one member of the planning board as well. So I'll read the names and ask that you vote to nominate, to endorse these, to accept these people as the Newberry Campus Zoning Study Committee. So we have Helen Sharapskie, Fisher Hill resident and school committee member, Derek Choi, who is a Fisher Hill resident and architect and a member of Economic Development Advisory Board, Janet Fearman, a building commission member and attorney, Michael Glover, a school committee member and attorney, Brumard Green, a select board chair, Steve Hyken from a planning, a planning board member and an architect, Georgia Johnson, Fisher Hill resident, Roger Lipson, a Fisher Hill resident, town meeting member from precinct 14 in which the Newbury is located, and an attorney, Carlos Redrewit, I'm going to always mess up his name, I'm sorry, Carlos, Redrewer Erho, Fisher Hill resident, advisory committee member and architect, Paul Sainer, Fisher Hill resident, EDAB member, that's Economic Development Advisory Board, town meeting member from precinct 13, Kathy Spiegelman, urban planner and real estate expert, and Neil Wyschinsky, advisory committee member, town meeting member from precinct five, and myself as the chair of the committee. So that is the group that we put together, I'm excited about it. Many of these people were on the Acquisition Study Committee and, but now we've added some additional members and lost some from the other committee. So, you know, we look forward to getting to work and accomplishing a very aggressive schedule of approvals until we reach town meeting. Did you want to say anything else about that, Mr. Franco?
No.
Okay. So as Mr. Green said, our first meeting will be in October, but we will, hopefully many of the members will be attending the community meeting on September the 26th. And, you know, we look forward to working on this project.
Thank you. Any questions? I move approval of the Newberry College Zoning Committee members. It's listed by select person Heller. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay, Boards and Commissions Appointments. Question of making appointments to the following boards and commissions. Small Business Development Committee, are you going to mention that or talk about that?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, I'm very excited. We, we voted in this committee just a few short weeks ago. We received 25 applications for this committee and we're putting 13 of those applicants in front of the board today. I want to go through them, just as select person Heller just did for the, for the previous committee, so you know that who these folks are. One is Debbie Good Miller, who is the director, executive director of the Brookline Chamber of Commerce. We also have Ann Myers, who is the co-chair of the EDAB, which is the Economic Development Advisory Board, David Lashinsky, who is the director of the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association and also the business owner of Eureka Puzzles, Melissa Tapper Goldman, who is with the Brookline Village Business Association and also one of the co-owners of the Village Works, co-working space in Brookline Village, Mark Bera, who's an architect and also developer, Raj Danda, who is a property owner as well as a business owner, Debbie Raisner Thompson, who's worked in small business support, is actually an entrepreneur in residence at the Newton Innovation Center. We see Elias Audi, a well-known business owner in town, Anika Sarin, who is an artist and business owner as well, Steve Silverman, who's previously been a business owner and now actually supports folks who are developing small businesses through SCORE, Sam Glaslo, who is in real estate development, Sandy Machado, who is a designer and also a small business owner, and finally Talia Glass, who is a restaurant owner, she's, she's the owner of Alliam, which I frequent very often. I'll also say that Meredith Mooney is staffing this committee and she's been absolutely excellent to work with so far. So these are the names we're putting forward for the Small Business Development Committee.
Any questions? Yeah, I have one question slash comment. What's missing is a banker. I know bankers are persona non grata around certain parts of town. No one likes to have a bank instead of a nice fancy restaurant in their neighborhood. But you can't run a business, whether it's a small business or a large business, without a banking relationship. So you may not have gotten any bankers to apply, but I urge you to reach out to local banks in, in your deliberation so that you have an understanding, so the committee has an understanding of the role that bankers play in getting businesses, especially small businesses, off the ground as well as continuing. And the relationship between banks and small businesses is not always an easy one, you know, because bankers need to get their, get their security for any loans they take out. But still, there are things that they can offer that I think are critically important if we're going to have a successful small business development effort in town.
Right. I agree, and in addition to the members of the committee, one of the things we'll be doing this, I still work in semesters as an academic, but this semester, we're going to be bringing in guest speakers. And so Meredith and I have been working on a list of guest speakers who'll come in and talk about some different aspects of business development, business support, and certainly we want to include the banking committee as part of that.
The other thing I hope you, also I'm sure you do, see the overlap between your committee and efforts we're making to get local cannabis establishments to carry out their social equity responsibilities, which could have a lot of, could help in terms of identifying potential small businesses as well as helping them along, at least in that, you know, particular industry, which could be useful as well as important.
That's a good point.
Okay, any other questions? Move of approval of the Small Business Development Committee, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay. Mr. Klugner suggested that the select board warrant articles, next item is warrant articles for the fall town meeting. So suggestion that we put off until later on in the evening because we're getting a little behind, Article One, Article 10. Two and 10, which are select board articles.
And they're, they're pretty perfunctory, so I don't, I don't anticipate any controversy, so I'm comfortable moving them to presumably the end of the agenda.
And, and these are public hearings, so anyone who has something to say about these articles, please, you know, let it be known that you're interested in talking. So first, collective bargaining, Ms. Goff, do you?
Moving that to the end?
We're going to put those off, two and 10.
Oh, I'm sorry, so only two and 10, one and 10.
One, two and 10 are going to go, skip over and go with that.
Okay, okay, sorry. Article 32, Chairman to Chair, Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Neil Gordon, precinct one town meeting member, member of the advisory committee. The warrant article is very straightforward. It is a search and replace to take out everywhere in the general bylaw where there were chairman exists, there's one place I believe chairperson exists, and replace that with chair. It's, it's that straightforward, it's not any more complicated.
Okay, any question? What do we, we, oh, it's a public hearing. Any, any comments from the audience? Any comments from the board?
Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Are you willing to approve it?
I'm willing to vote for it tonight.
Okay. Move of approval of warrant Article 32. Chair, Chairman to Chair, is that, no, Chair for Chairman and Chairperson article. So Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, also, Mr. Gordon, Replace Inhabitants and Citizen Terms, Article 33.
So let me speak, let me speak to Article 33 and 34 together. I'm still Neil Gordon. I'm still Neil Gordon, town meeting member, precinct one. And, and, you know, thank you for kicking off the 2019 town meeting season. So I thought we would start, speaking of articles 33 and 34, with a little quiz, short quiz, on the Brooklyn bylaw, Brooklyn bylaw. So one, to serve on a Brooklyn board, commission, or committee, do you need to be a resident, a citizen, or voter? Wait till you've heard all the questions. Two, do you need that qualification to serve, to be appointed, to serve, or to be nominated? And three, do Brooklyn's board, commissions, committees, and departments serve to protect citizens, residents, or the public? So the questions are rhetorical, but the answer to all three questions is, it depends. So I'll give you some quick examples. To serve on the commission for women, you need to be a Brooklyn resident. To serve on the council for aging, you need to be a citizen, by the words of the bylaw. Our tobacco control bylaw, quoting, protects the health, safety, and welfare of inhabitants, also known as residents. But you can discharge a firearm in Brooklyn only to protect the citizen, because that's what the bylaw says. So inconsistencies in the general bylaw exist for a reason. The sections were drafted at different times, some with language cut and adopted from other cities and towns, others, I believe innocently drafted with words like citizen, that over time have evolved their meaning, and don't, as I like to say, lots of people look at citizen broadly, you don't look at it that way when you're not one, right? So the word has meaning. Warrant articles 33 and 34 seek to correct, to correct the inconsistency, so except where otherwise required by law. I've set the bar for service on boards, commissions, and committees as resident. It's a broader term, it's more inclusive than some of the terms we see in the bylaw now, which are citizen or voter. Similarly, in article 34, I propose changes in the other provisions in the general bylaw, for the most part, to the more inclusive term, the public, or words to that effect, from less inclusive terms such as resident and citizen. The changes remove artificial barriers, most if not all imposed unintentionally. Where the language of the bylaw is not exclusionary in practice, I think that the Brooklyn Police Department does not check whether you're a citizen before they decide to protect you. Those words still matter, and our words, especially official words, express our efforts to be more welcoming community. So let those who live here, and those who are just passing through, those with birth certificates, those with naturalization papers, and those with no documents at all, all have the same protection by the words of the Brooklyn bylaw. Thank you.
Any questions?
So I just, I want to understand exactly what the implication of some of these changes in 34 are.
Sure.
And I want to be clear, I'm not passing judgment, I'm just trying to figure out what we're, what we're doing. So let's take eligibility for the advisory committee as an example. You proposed to strike registered voters as a, as verbiage and replace it with residents.
Correct.
So my reading today is, you've got to be a registered voter to serve in the advisory committee, which means you've got to be a citizen. If your language passes, that's no longer requirement. You could be a resident of some foreign country, Canada, Mexico, Guam, South Africa, and still be eligible to serve on the advisory committee. Is that, is that an accurate reading?
So resident, by definition, and I've changed this, from inhabitant, resident shall mean a resident of the town of Brooklyn. So you can't just be, everybody's a resident of somewhere, I suppose, more or less. You, you need to be a resident of the town of Brooklyn. So the advisory committee composition, set by bylaw, requires an appointment by the moderator of a town meeting member from every precinct. Town meeting members are citizens and voters, or you can't run for town meeting. Those town meeting members have to be citizens. I didn't see the requirement, the necessity, for at-large members of the advisory committee to be citizens or voters, when resident seem perfectly adequate as, as a bar. The appointment authority still being the moderator, and we presume that the moderator will choose most qualified candidates.
So resident would also include someone who is in the National Guard stationed in Kandahar for a temporary period of time?
Yes.
Okay.
Since we're parsing words, when you say voters, you mean eligible voters, they don't have to actually have voted.
So the, the language of the existing bylaw, it refers to voters. I think it's always been interpreted as registered voter, and not whether you actually cast, cast a vote. It's ambiguous, and I would agree.
Unless, because you don't vote, you're deregistered, which is a separate issue, right?
Correct.
Have you discussed this with the moderator?
I have. This particular change?
Yeah.
I had a short email exchange with the moderator some time ago, when this subject matter first came up. He wasn't particularly inclined to change the requirement. I drafted it this, I'm, I'm open to this discussion. I drafted it this way for a reason, because it can be closed back to where it was, but it couldn't be moved more broadly if I didn't put it in. So there it is. My position is that resident is sufficient, and if the moderator disagrees, the moderator can appoint voters, or citizens, or, you know, any sort of category that doesn't discriminate against a protected class.
Any other questions? More, what are we doing? We're approving the, yeah, we're approving. Okay. More approval of...
I would be interested in hearing what some other groups have to say on this, and taking some advice.
These came out from a search.
And just hearing the advice of other groups that, that may hold a hearing on this, and just get their, their perspective.
Okay.
So I'd be more comfortable if we, we held a vote until a future meeting.
Okay. 33 and 34. This is a public hearing, so any comments from the audience, Ms. Fraley?
That's why I was going to raise that it's not listed.
Did you mention who you are?
I beg pardon? Oh, I forget.
Tell us who you are.
Regina Fraley, town meeting member from 16. No, I rose because you didn't say it was a public hearing, and I just wanted to remind you that it should be a public hearing, that's number one. Number two...
I said that before you reminded us.
I can hear.
Go ahead.
Secondly, I am concerned about resident, because it means there's a residence, that's somebody lives in, and that could be seen as being against people who are temporary, who don't have a roof over their head, et cetera, and we talk about, and as the petitioner just said, we want to be a welcoming community. So I'm concerned about the use of that word. Thanks.
Mr. Gordon, is there any, have you looked at that issue? I, I think homeless people, for example, or residents of the town, where they're...
So, yeah, I'll, I'll leave that to discussion as to whether someone who is in Brooklyn and homeless would be considered a Brooklyn resident if they had a permanent presence in Brooklyn. My, my draft change here, changes, the, the bylaw as it currently exists, has a definition called inhabitant. An inhabitant is defined as a resident. That language, you know, one word defining one word. I made that change to say resident is a resident of the town of Brooklyn. It's certainly not my intent, or I suppose the intent of the existing language, to exclude someone who would be defined as a legal resident, even though they don't have a residence. But from my point of view of drafting, I didn't make that change.
I will say, in, in the definitions you have there, it does say resident shall mean a resident of the town of Brooklyn, and so some more clarity there might be helpful. To define a word using the exact same word, it doesn't provide much clarity on what actually to be a resident means. So maybe, maybe clearing that up would be helpful.
Do you have some suggestive language?
Not at the moment. Don't think about it.
So for those, those following along, it's article 33, it's 1214D, I think is what Ralph was talking about.
Okay. Any other comments from the audience, or from the board? None, let's, let's move on. We're going to take this up at a later date, after we hear from other boards and commissions, their comments and suggestions, so...
And for members of the public that may express their opinion at a later date.
Right. By email, or phone, or just yelling at us in the street. Okay. Next, we have special town meeting warrant. Question of calling a special town meeting within the November 19, 2019 town meeting. As I understand, this is to allow the, a warrant article reducing the voting age for town elections to 16? Can you give us some background and et cetera?
Sure. This is an article that the board had previously discussed, but when we executed the warrant, after we executed the warrant, we realized that it never got filed. So in order to remedy that, we are looking at potentially calling a special town meeting for the purpose of including this article on the agenda for what town meeting would be discussing on the 19th of November.
I guess the question is, does anyone, well, any questions or objections to actually doing that from the board?
I will just say, I'm very strongly in favor of this.
And this is not a hearing, but if anyone has any comments from the audience?
Just that it's not here.
You have to come to the microphone.
It's not clear in the packet what this is about. It wasn't in my packet, and I didn't hear what she said was the age.
16.
16. Oh, thanks. I'll have a chance to read it, thanks.
Okay.
I, well, I don't, I don't really object to calling a special, you know, but it seems to me that this is an issue that we should somehow, rather than in town, have town meeting weigh in on it first, we should have the voters of the town weigh in on it. You know, do the voters of the town want their 16-year-olds to vote? And I assume this could be limited to Brooklyn issues, right?
Yeah.
I just think that that's, it's the kind of thing that's...
By a general election?
Well, a resolution by, you know, on the ballot for Brooklyn residents, do you want to allow 16-year-olds to vote in, in general, in Brooklyn, in Brooklyn matters?
There's a provision in the state law that allows cities and towns to put non-binding advisory questions on the ballot. We, I don't call in my tenure we've ever done it, but some communities do it.
Town meeting is a representative elected body, so I, I'm comfortable going to town meeting on this issue, as opposed to spending thousands of dollars on an election.
No, you would do it at the, at the May election, when there's a, you know, a ballot anyway, and not spending anything more, except printing, which is not very much.
But the problem with a general election is that you don't really have the spirited debate that we have at town meeting on a philosophical question such as this. And you, you're asking voters who are eligible right now to vote on whether to let other people join the club. That hasn't necessarily gone well in the past.
So I don't disagree with the fact that there's a philosophical component in your point about who would be voting on any advisory question. I do want to inject that there is a, there is a practical and a financial component to this, which I'll certainly be interested to hear, hearing from the town clerk about. My uninformed opinion at this point is we'd have to maintain a separate voter role just for municipal elections. We can't rely on the, the state or even the federal role anymore, because we're expanding it to other people. Now, that may cost 10 extra dollars, it may cost $100,000. I, I don't know the answer, but there is, there's a cost to that, financially and administratively, practically, that's certainly more than zero. So I think it's a little bit more holistic, and a little bit more complex than just a moral or a philosophical question.
I've been thinking about this issue for a while, and at the May town meeting, I had a brief conversation with our town clerk to see whether or not this was going to be an undue burden financially and staff-wise, and he, he said that it would not.
Yeah. I don't mean to have the debate now, I just, I look forward to collecting information. I wanted to bookmark the fact that it's a little bit more holistic.
Exactly. That, that probably would have prevented me from pursuing.
Just a little clarity, well, I mean, I support this absolutely, but what we're voting on today is just whether or not we're going to include a special town meeting within a special town meeting to address it. We're not voting as a board on this yet, right? Okay.
And we'll have the robust debate at town meeting, I'm sure.
And here, too, before, because we'll make a recommendation, right?
Okay. I'm of approval of the special town meeting warrant.
You should have a recommended vote in your packet.
Oh, okay.
Because there are certain statutory requirements that are needed in order to call the meeting.
Okay. The magic language.
Yes.
I'm of that we call, yeah, call a special town meeting on Tuesday, November 19, 2019, 7:30 PM, at the high school auditorium, to waive the requirements of section 2.1.2 through 2.1.4 of the town bylaws, to open and close the warrant, and to insert in said warrant the following article. Article one, to see if the town will request that the select board file a home rule petition to allow any citizens in the town of Brooklyn, notwithstanding the provisions of general laws 51, or chapter 51, sections, sections one and section 47A, who have reached the age of 16 or older, to register and vote in municipal elections within the town, or to take any other action relative thereto. And the sections referenced in that vote are the sections of the bylaws regarding posting of notice and closing the warrant, so. All in favor? Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, our first hearing. Again, like I said, don't say we don't apologize. I apologize for the lateness of this meeting. So Mr. Masek, public hearing on the question of approving a noise bylaw waiver request from Skanska USA Building for work to be performed at the Unified Arts Building parking lot on the following dates, September 16 and September 17, September 20 and September 23. Mr. Masek.
Ray Masek with the building department. I'm going to turn this over to Skanska, our construction manager. We have Peter Roach and Michael Pew.
So quickly, because this is our first appearance in front of this board, I want to take a quick opportunity on behalf of our entire organization at Skanska, to express our gratitude to be a partner of the town of Brooklyn in the exciting expansion of the high school project. A project of this complexity and this nature is where we excel, and we have a large team that's very excited to, to be here on behalf of the town executing the project. We bring just shy of 20 folks that will be full-time on site overseeing between 150 and 200 craft workers at any given time throughout the course of the project. I mentioned the 20 folks. As you're aware, we have multiple buildings to construct and multiple buildings to renovate, and we have a team of dedicated professionals for each one of those projects. So you'll see a small group of us probably here at these meetings from time to time, and primarily the operations leads for each one of those projects, in addition to myself. And I would like the opportunity for Mike Pew, the project manager on the 111 Cypress project, he's the operations lead on that project, to present to you the material for tonight's discussion.
Good evening. I would like to point out a couple discrepancies I saw on the agenda for tonight. It was for a duration of only two nights. The original permit that we asked was actually for a duration of two years. It's roughly the construction... It's roughly the construction duration for the project. And it will not be limited to the Unified Arts Building parking lot. It would be the 111 Cypress Street project limits. So the Unified Arts Building is a part of that, but it extends all the way down Cypress Street to Brinkton Road. What we're asking for is.
Wait, you're asking for two years of waiving noise bylaw?
Correct.
That's, yeah.
That is correct.
Is there going to be, is it going to be noisy for two years in that neighborhood?
No, and I think that is very, very important for me to clarify. We are not going to be producing noise every night, every weekend. We will do our best to work within the current noise bylaws. Given our voice, we can construct this particular project anywhere else within the noise bylaws. What we're fighting is the MBTA's right-of-way approvals. They do not allow us to conduct certain activities during normal business hours and the windows that they give us to conduct those activities are early access nights, which means we get access to their zone of influence, which is defined as 30 feet from their property line from 10 o'clock at night to about 3:00 in the morning, or a full weekend diversion where they shut down the station completely and bus around it. So there are certain activities that are very, very, very close to the MBTA zone of influence and we have to work outside of the normal, or what the MBTA calls non-revenue hours.
I guess my question is, can we identify specific days where we ask neighbors to put up with noise as opposed to a two-year period, which is not going to fly?
I think we can. The MBTA, we do not have all the diversions approved by the MBTA and they vary fairly drastically. We can get an approval one week and they can come back and take it away, whether it's weather-dependent or something else happens on their line and they'll ask us to shift, which is part of the reason we are asking to be fairly flexible with this. So we are at the mercy of the MBTA. Given our schedule, we can pinpoint dates, but we aren't guaranteed those dates with the MBTA or the times that we want with the MBTA. We're going to be limited by baseball games, events at Fenway, other events on the Green Line and weather.
And if I could, if I could add, the request is for a two-year duration because it's very difficult to find, to define the exact dates given the parameters of the MBTA. We might propose a conditional approval where if we could secure approval for the two-year duration for the project and that we report to the town on a specific frequency, perhaps monthly or by monthly, of the diversions that the MBTA has requested. So we feel that may be an equitable middle ground where we don't have to consume the time of this board for approval to work during the off-hours, but we can openly communicate to the town of Brookline when the MBTA is requiring specific periods to do so.
So how, okay, so I guess the question is, can we alert the neighbors that tonight it's going to be noisy? And how far in advance do you know that?
So right now, the two diversions that we know about are Monday night, the 16th and the weekend of the 20th to the 22nd. Those are two diversions that we know are approved by the MBTA at this particular moment. So that gets us through about the end of September.
But we're planning to give notices to those neighbors. Is that correct?
Correct.
We're, we're planning to send out notices. So I, I don't think we'll be sending out one notice for the next two years. We'll be sending out notices as we're planning and know exactly what is going to happen in the project. So that, it goes without saying. I mean, but, you know, we are, as, as Mike said, we're at the mercy of the MBTA here and we're trying to piggyback as much as we can on the weekends when they are doing work because that saves us money and makes a lot of sense for the neighborhood because they, you know, if the MBTA is working in the neighborhood and, or even further down the track, but, you know, they've cut down, then we're at least piggybacking on their already, what's already happening. So, but they change all the time, you know? They lift, they give us a schedule and then the next thing we know, it's not that schedule. It's different. So we have to be able to have flexibility.
They also have a permanent noise bylaw waiver. So that helps them.
The MBTA.
Yeah.
To, to answer your direct question in terms of can we provide notice, the answer is yes. And I think that we would work with Ray to determine the right way to do that. I can think of multiple ways to do that. There's a website that's been established that the town of Brookline hosts that we could work with the town to communicate diversions and those schedules. I know that there's been some discussion about developing specific email lists for specific areas around the project. We could utilize that and we'll have signage on the job site fences as well, so it'd be an opportunity for people to check in there. But I'm confident, we also, in advance of this meeting, canvassed all the directed butters and placed paper flyers at all of their residences. That's time-consuming and I think there's a more efficient way to do that, but if need be, that's what we'd be willing to do.
Do you have a sense of, over the course of the next two years, how many evenings of night work would, would be necessary on, including, it even says weekends and holidays too. Like, how many evenings of night work would be necessary to complete this project?
We have a general idea. We are making some assumptions of what the MBTA will allow us to do during normal working hours. Once we kind of get further upon the process and we start doing weekly coordination meetings with the MBTA's right-of-way committee, we will have a very clear understanding the further we get along, what they will allow us to do during our normal working hours and what they're going to force us to do on non-revenue hours. So we have a general idea. We know, like, for example, erecting steel up and over the Green Line, we can't do that while the Green Line is running. There are other activities, we're assuming once we have that steel erected, we can work above it and we're hoping that they allow us to do that.
We also have an approximation of about 27 weekends that we plan to be working with the intent, to the greatest extent possible, to piggyback on existing MBTA diversions. As you know, there's a lot of work being executed on the, on the D-line. Sometimes it works to our advantage and we can coordinate with them and work together. Other times, the two together may cause the entire line to have to be bussed and they may not approve a diversion. The 27 weekends, depending on the feedback that we get from the MBTA, if they can't approve a weekend diversion, they may ask us to do early access at night during the week. So there could be a very large fluctuation in that number, but that is our current estimate.
Another concern is, as written, it doesn't give any relief for Thanksgiving week for other holidays that'll be taking place over the course of the next two years. I don't know if there's any way to, if, if we want to move forward on this, I don't know that we do, but.
How likely is it that we would be doing this over Christmas or New Year, or Thanksgiving?
You know, that's a, that's a great question and I really would have to defer to the MBTA, but what I would recommend as a steward of the town's money is if the MBTA has a scheduled diversion that weekend and they're already going to be working on the tracks, that you allow us to do so.
There are a lot of unanswered questions that we're not going to be able to answer here tonight and based on experience that we had with National Grid a couple months ago, they're doing some work in Washington Square and we approved a noise bylaw waiver for seven months and then heard an earful from residents afterwards. I think I would be comfortable with maybe like until the end of the year and then we revisit to kind of see how the next couple of months go.
Absolutely. We could work with that if it, if that's agreeable.
Well, that would give also people time to come in, you know, at the next, at the next hearing to tell you all the things that they didn't like. But, you know, it is, it's a fact of living in an urban environment and near a, a train station is, you are going to have, and we know already that people on the D-line call us to complain when there's work and they never even get any notice of it. So we know that it is disruptive.
I think the one challenge to be cognizant of there is it'll be very hard for anyone outside of the project to determine if the noise is coming from the MBTA's work on the Green Line versus our work on the Green Line. And I think all that.
We can blame it on them then.
We could very quickly get, get commingled and I wouldn't want their work to reflect poorly on ours.
So one problem we have is that the notice, as Mr. Franco pointed out to me, we noticed only the four days in our agenda. So we can vote those and I think following up on Ms. Hamilton's suggestion, maybe come back with at least an estimate of the days that you would need over a three to six-month period and, and after that again, and provide to the residents sort of advanced notice of what's going to be happening going forward and to its extent possible notify them of each individual noisy night. Does that make sense? Is that doable?
It absolutely does. For the record, the notice that we canvassed to the neighborhood was the actual application that identified the two-year period, so it was just a slight, just a clerical discrepancy there, but it absolutely makes sense and I think we can work with that.
Okay. So I think that means that next, maybe next week, we'll get another bylaw waiver that would include dates over the next three or six months, whatever makes sense.
I would like more time than one week to put that.
Okay. Whenever, yeah.
So if we could go back through, write an advisory of the.
Well, I, I don't, you know, I know it's, it's tough, but I'm not sure that over the next three or six months, we could identify with absolute certainty exactly which weekends. As I said, we're trying to do this piggybacking.
I think that's fair. I mean, I.
So I, I think we should just say during this period of time, we would expect to work approximately, you know, 10 or 15 weekends, whatever it is, and, you know, that when the MBTA is giving us the diversions or doing its own diversions, we're hoping to piggyback on those.
My concern is just that people have notice of upcoming potential noise.
We will be giving them notice for every, every weekend, right? That we're going to do it.
So perhaps what we'll do is produce a schedule that identifies the already approved MBTA weekends, which may address my concern of communicating what's them and what's us.
And they might change. And they might change.
It changes every Tuesday, frankly. They have a right-of-way committee meeting and an access meeting and it literally changes every Tuesday.
These are the approximate weekends or the estimated weekends or something.
But we can identify on the schedule what their previously planned weekends are and how we plan to dovetail into those if that's okay to do.
So we share that goal. I think an email list is a good idea. I would not rely exclusively on an email list as the means of communication because somebody's always changing their email address, somebody moves in or moves out, somebody leases or rents a condo.
And the boards are a good idea.
So I would create a board, I'd put a website on there, drive traffic in both that email and the board to a master list that's updated whenever it's updated, on a weekly basis or as information becomes available. And then it's clear to everybody what's going on, the most up-to-date information is available, even if you're not on that email list, you know where to look and it becomes socialized. Any other announcements that you want to make about construction, hey, be aware that we're getting steel delivered and there may be some traffic impacts or, you know, doing heavy construction today and it's, we expect it to be noisy between the hours of nine and 11. I'm making it up a little bit, but I think.
You're understepped.
Yep.
Okay.
The, the boards are already posted on the fence, the website is already posted on the boards. So all that would remain is that we need to coordinate with the, with the town. It's the town of Brookline hosted website, so we would coordinate with the town with those communications are on the website.
Perfect.
I, I would encourage you to reach out to the town meeting members of Precinct Six, which I think this is, yeah, Ray? Okay. Excellent.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Yes. Yeah, you have to. You don't have to, but if you want to be on TV, then we require you to be on TV.
I don't like to do photographs. My name's Tom Robinson. I'm a resident of 195 Davis Avenue on Cypress. And full disclosure, I'm an architect who's been doing large institutional and civic work for 30 years. I've worked over the Turnpike, the Amtrak tracks and MBTA. So I'm fairly well aware of all the complexities and the difficulty that Skanska is going to meet and try to, to complete this project. However, their original request, I am, I am very concerned about a two-year request and somewhat the vagueness of it. This is an incredibly ambitious project to do in two years' time. We originally heard that the buildings were going to be torn down in June. My guess is the CPA, Critical Path Analysis, is already showing we're a little bit behind schedule and I'm concerned that a overall two-year waiver will be somewhat abused to make up our schedule when we're running behind. My guess is that Skanska has a bonus in their contract if they finish early and a penalty if they finish late. And that penalization cannot go to the residents if we start working lots of late nights and weekends to make up schedule. So I have a couple of questions. The work that is being done, the first work that you spoke of, Mr. Pugh, being done Monday night, the 16th is for what?
To remove at the Unified Arts Building parking lot.
So is, is it my understanding that the MBTA commission said you could not do that work on an overnight on a weekend? And that's what necessitated a Monday night?
We said, we asked them on Monday night, it's the first available time we could get into that lot and do it.
Okay. So I think something we have to think about is, you know, my daughter is in ninth grade. She's already incredibly inconvenienced by this whole OLS thing. We need this building in Brookline. We've known for 10 years that we needed this building, but she lives right next door and now on a Monday night, she's going to be kept up. And so one of my first questions would be, while it works well for your schedule to first available Monday night, in consideration of the neighbors, why are we not asking for work on a Friday night, a Saturday night, or an early shutdown on a weekend so that we're not keeping the residents up on a weeknight? And this is something, and I will send you all a letter about this, it's something I think we have to think about all along. They have, do you know what a CPA is? The Critical Path Analysis? I'm sure Skanska is doing their Critical Path Analysis and that Critical Path Analysis is going to start plugging some of this night work in to weeknights for them to finish in the two years. But I would really ask Skanska and the board and the town to consider that that CPA get adjusted to try and put most of this stuff on weekend nights and not weeknights when there are children in the neighborhood who have to go to school and we don't want to keep them up all night. And I live on, you know, closer to the high school on Cypress, but the fact is, any noise going on over there really echoes across Cypress. In fact, snow nights, when they're bringing all the dumpsters in to take the snow away and actually, I, does the town, do they have an exception generally for noise? Because on snow nights, the noise is incredible for those of us on Davis Avenue with all the dumpsters coming and going and the beeping and all that stuff. And so while we're all the way at the other end of Cypress Field, the sound does travel. So that's kind of my first question. Then your next night request is for tearing down the building at 111 Cypress, correct, Mr. Pugh?
It's the last portion of the 111 Cypress.
So you just answered my question. So you're going to tear it down to the 30 feet and then wait until the, okay. That's good. So I have a lot of things here. We're running late, I don't want to take time. I, my request would be, and I speak for everybody in my building, I have everybody's permission to speak for them, that the board tonight approve their first two requests, not through December, and that we have a chance to look at the CPA and express more of our concerns. Because I have three pages of testimony, I don't think we need to get into that tonight.
Why don't you give that to Mr. Masek as well as the board?
Yeah, I can send it, send it to all of you.
As I mentioned earlier, we are only able to vote on not two, but four dates that were noted.
Because I sympathize with these gentlemen and I want to see the building get done. I'm a huge advocate of the schools, I volunteer all the time, but I also want to make sure that, that, you know, my neighbors and all of us and the neighbors, because we only got this notice on Friday too. And we're a pretty active group, if you heard some of the stuff during the whole AstroTurf thing. And so I'd like time to go over this with neighbors and come to you with one voice rather than lots of different voices and try and make it cleaner and come up with something that works very well for them as well as those of us that live in the neighborhood. So I would encourage the board to say yes to their two, first two variance requests and then let's get the CPA, let's hear about, you know, the commission. And, and one suggestion I. Let's hear about, you know, the commission. And, and one suggestion I have is that, you know, once they know what work they have to do on nights and weekends, they could ask for a variance for that work with their preferred dates with the understanding that the MBTA may change it and that might make it an easier way. Say, you have the approval for this work setting the seal over the tracks and the anticipated date is such and such, but that approval for that work goes out a month because we know it could rain, something else could happen and they could get delayed. So maybe it's, it's an approval per piece of work. Another, one last question, the piles, are they driven or drilled?
Yeah, rammed aggregate piers and drilled the huts.
So can the aggregate piers be drilled or do they have to be rammed?
You get pre-harried and then they get rammed out.
Okay, so that's just one other thing is, is what is the effort being made in terms of using quiet compressors, using quiet generators and stuff like that when this work is being done? So I have a lot to say, but I'll put it in writing to you guys. All right, thanks.
Any other comment? Any other questions?
I'm Matt Odens, a resident of 26 Brinkton Road, planning board member and high school building committee member. As in a butter, I just wanted to echo some of the comments that Mr. Robinson made. I didn't expect to see him here tonight. But really, I had two main concerns. The two-year timeframe, you know, I get it, we have to break some eggs. I just don't want omelets being made every night where there's an opportunity to. So I think, I think the two-year period is crazy. I'm not even in favor, frankly, of the, let's give them approval to the end of the year. I think there should be concrete dates. I think there should be approval for specific dates to make sure that that is for T-related work. Like Mr. Robinson, I don't want to see this as a way to make up time in a schedule that slips. We see that happen often and I just, I'm not saying that Skanska is in the habit of doing that. I just don't want there to be an opportunity for that kind of loophole. Notice is the other issue. Like Mr. Robinson, we got the notice, you know, days ago. I was able to come tonight. That won't always be the case. So figuring out a way to make sure that the residents get notice, I think email is a great idea. I think the mailing should still happen. I think there needs to be some redundancy so that people are sure to understand that there's going to be a hearing. And frankly, I think that there should be hearings related to specific dates. And if that means there are 10 hearings, apologies to you all as a board. I, I personally think that's the way it should go. It shouldn't just be a blanket approval. So, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Maisak, you have a response?
We did a lot of summer work this summer. We will not use night work to advance the schedule and we didn't do. We did about $5 million worth of work this summer over the last two months. And that's a, that's a lot of work and we did it through overtime and we did it through the confines of the noise bylaw and those specific hours. We did work on weekends and people that probably weren't fully aware of that. But that was, we're not, they didn't ask to do it at night. We didn't do any night work. We didn't do any early morning work. Whatever the board, whatever the board wants will, will come before you. We'll provide specifics. This is only about, this is only about MBTA work. We've been put in this situation by the MBTA and the only reason we want to do night work is for MBTA work and diversions. And, and if we didn't have to, we'd be working normal and wouldn't be here tonight.
Let me just say one other thing, that, you know, one of the reasons that the demolition slipped in terms of the timing is because of the MBTA delays on getting us back into the, you know, getting, executing the licenses and the easements and the things we needed to be able to go ahead with work. So it's, it's a frustrating process, but that's what we've got and we have to live with it. But I know that Peter and his team are working to figure out how to adjust that and not at the expense of doing work every single night. But as Ray said, we can work within the confines of the noise bylaw to do something during the day on Saturday or Sunday or do, you know, start in the morning and finish a little later than they normally would, but within the confines of the noise bylaw so that it's not disruptive. So that's what we've been doing and that's the reason why the construction demolition has slipped, if you will.
Okay, any other comments, questions from the audience?
May I take a moment?
Sure.
Just to address those. Great comments and concerns. And I often find myself wishing that I wasn't in a business that denigrated those kinds of comments and concerns. But by nature, we are a little bit dirty and disruptive at times to execute the projects that our clients bring us in to do. I want to be, I want to emphasize what, what Ray said. We're not here for Skanska tonight. We can execute this project and to emphasize what Mike Pugh said, we can execute this project within the town bylaws. The limiting factor is the MBTA's permission to allow us to work adjacent and over the tracks. So we don't want to be here asking for, for this permission. But by nature of one public agency, the MBTA, and another with the town, we have to be here to request your approval to work those hours. We do not have a bonus in our contract for early completion. We do have heavy penalties for, for late completion. But again, I'm confident that we can deliver this project on time within the town bylaws. We are behind schedule and it is strictly because of the MBTA at this point on this project and our ability to, to start the work. And we're working very hard to mitigate the impact that the MBTA has had on the project. And we remain committed to pulling that schedule back over the course of the next two years. But we wouldn't utilize night work and early morning work on weekends to accelerate the job. We would work within the town bylaws to do that. And to address the other question, if the MBTA required us to work on a weeknight as opposed to a weekend? No, that was our choice to ask for that. It was the first available shift that we could work at night. And we're literally, because we are impacted by the start date, we are looking to execute every piece of work that we can as early as possible. And what that does is mitigates the impact to the end. So if we were to wait from Monday night to take the trees down until Saturday afternoon to take the trees down, that means that we are actively executing this project for one week longer into the 2021 school year potentially. My preference would be to work those nights and weekends and deliver the school when we've committed to delivering the school with your permission to do so.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, come on up. Prefer not to get into a back and forth in debate.
But we can address this later, but I think what I just heard was that, that the trees could actually be done on a weekend. And I understand the CPA and the schedule, but that's why I'm saying we need to look at it as we go down the line. Because, I'm sorry, but you're disrupting, you're disrupting my sleep for your schedule when you could be cutting the trees down on Saturday afternoon. And so I think that's where we as residents have a big problem.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we have to really look at that carefully in the future.
I just went off briefly. I mean, I, I think we'll have this debate another day, right? We're going to vote on these, on these four nights right now. I mean, I will say, just briefly, is understanding the, the situation that Skanska's in and, and, and wanting to get this work done. And it's important work that we want to see done in the town. But I think also we've heard loud and clear from neighbors around, around night work and that there have to be reasonable limits. And, and the, the proposal that we're not going to vote on tonight that was here provides no limits whatsoever. And I don't, I just, that's just completely untenable. We have to figure out some kind of balance for residents to not just know when work's going to happen, but to know that there are certain limits within a, within a given month about how many nights of work there will actually be. And so even if they got no, you know, very advanced notice, if there were 30 nights of, of night work in a, in a month, that clearly wouldn't be acceptable, right? And so we've got to figure something out. I mean, we, we'll, we'll, we'll debate this another day or figure it out another day. But, but just know that there, I hope you understand where we're coming from is that we've heard loud and clear that, that residents not just want notice, but they also, they want this work done and they want certain limitations so that they can also live their lives over the next, across the next two years.
Okay, move approval of the noise bylaw waiver. Four work to be performed at the Unified Arts Building Parking Lot on the following dates. September 16 and September 17, that is a tree removal. And September 20th and September 23rd, that's for demolition. Any questions? Any final questions? Move approval. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Next, open air parking license. Also a public hearing. Question of approving a transfer of ownership of a license for Janice Hoffman to conduct and maintain an open-air parking lot with an area of about 10,240 square feet at 195 Rosson Street for 20 automobiles.
Hi.
And you must be Ms. Hoffman?
I am. I purchased the lot last April. I've been managing it since. I brought my receipts of notice to a butters that I was asked to bring. And I don't know what else you might want.
So Police Department approval is pending. Do you have that yet? According to our.
Apparently this hearing is a formality after which I'm supposed to have that.
Okay.
I don't see Park, the police really as the, as the, as the most important entity here, mostly building department.
But I do have one question. He just passed a map, if you go back two pages. What I'd love to know is who owns the driveway between 193 and 197 that accesses my lot called 195? Because there was a pothole in it that I physically fixed myself with my hands yesterday and I don't really work in.
Construction.
Yeah, blacktop, sand, gravel with a tamper that I now own. I spent my afternoon fixing that and that wasn't really fun and I got dirty, but it's okay. It's nice to learn. But I feel like there's a good chance I was repairing somebody else's driveway. I'm told that I'm plowing it only to access my parking lot when there are a lot of other people who park back there in, behind each building, that is that circle of buildings. I don't know if you can see a picture of the map. But, so I don't know who owns the driveway that I just fixed to get karma points. I would love to know because I don't think it's me.
You could probably contact the assessor.
Okay, you guys can't tell from the drawing?
No.
No, we wouldn't know any.
Okay, never mind. Can I give you my receipts?
Give that to Ms.
Ms. McGee.
So my, my only question is, the fire department and the report we got says that the drawing that I think you submitted doesn't match the layout.
We've clarified that.
We've clarified it.
Yep, yep.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing that, I'm move approval. I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. Come on up.
My name is Dina Salzberg and we own 201 Rosson Road. And my family has owned the house for the last 53 years. And the driveway has always been part of the upper part of the parking lot responsibility. And I actually came because I was concerned about that pothole.
Could you talk into the mic?
I was concerned about the pothole in the driveway area. And it's always been the responsibility for snow removal as well as maintenance of the hardtop for that area. There are quite a few abutters and we do use that community driveway for access. And the trash collectors also pick up our trash in the back of the house with the small truck. So they have to have good accessibility. But the prior owners of the property have maintained the driveway very nicely. And our hope is that the new owners will be able to do the same then.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Mark Lowenstein, town meeting member, also in a butter of the area at 197 Rosson Road. And I'd like to thank Ms. Hoffman for filling in that pothole, although it was yesterday on the eve of this meeting. So there's a bit of an irony there. It's been there for a long time. But there is the broader issue of the ownership and responsibility for the driveway because there is an issue there with what looks to be some sort of underground seepage of water that's been there for as long as we've lived there, for two-plus years. There's a spot that's always wet, even days after it rains. We think the pothole was also caused by some sort of underground seepage. So, and, and then around where that water is, there's sort of spreading cracks in the pavement. And so the driveway is becoming, or is becoming or could become a bit of an issue. And so establishing who owns that and whose responsibility it is to maintain it, particularly if it gets into something that's more than just filling in a pothole, is, is important, I think, to just bear out here now that we have the opportunity with this change of ownership in a public hearing. So I just wanted to at least raise this issue. I don't, I don't have a request other than really, well, first, I guess it's to establish whose responsibility the driveway is. And once that's, and if it is indeed Ms. Hoffman's, that we need to get this underground seepage issue or that water issue looked at and addressed. Thank you. I have a picture of it if anybody wants to see on my phone.
Is it a special type of pothole?
No, I mean, what it is, is it is, there's a, there's a large spot that's always wet, even if it hasn't rained in a week. So it's clear that there's something coming from underground. So what probably needs to be done is we need to sort of dig it up and try to determine whether some sort of an underground leak.
Wouldn't the building?
I'm, I'm wondering, this wasn't addressed in the zoning board case?
The ZBA case from 1977?
Well, we'll look at it. I, I don't know the answer, but we'll certainly ask our engineering department to look at the, the issue that has been raised. But we don't know offhand.
Go to the microphone, please.
He brought this to my attention yesterday on the telephone and I said I'll look into it. So I just asked you who owns it. You said you didn't know. You said I should check with the town. Now you're saying you'll check with the town. So I can't address any water issue that I don't know about. And in terms of the irony of me filling it yesterday, it's not that ironic. It's the first time I had two hours to run around to Home Depot and then drive from Waltham to Brookline, fill the hole and get to my next job. So it's only small irony. I only noticed the pothole the first time a couple of weeks ago. I don't live there.
Okay.
I live elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question for you. Do you own or operate any other parking lots?
I, I don't own or operate other parking lots, but I manage a dozen, I own and manage a dozen properties for 30 years. Seventeen till recently. I sold five to buy the parking lot.
What's the going rate for these spots?
The spot's 250.
250?
And it takes a lot of 250s to make your million dollars back. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Do you guys want to follow up with the, to see who owns that driveway that he brought up?
We will.
Or do you want me to, or?
I think it, it might fall on, on your responsibility.
I'm glad to. It's just that he just said he's talking to an engineer about a prior case.
Looking into the issue of water seepage. I mean, that's something that our building department will look.
That's the driveway that is up for discussion. If it's not my driveway, I'm not digging it up. I just did the pothole to be proactive.
You don't want us to look up title to a piece of property. That's really your responsibility.
Right, no, that's fine. I'm happy to do that. I just didn't, I wanted to make sure who's doing what.
Okay.
So in terms of that zoning thing from 77 that you mentioned?
Yeah.
Shall I wait to hear? Shall he wait to hear?
We will look at that. I, I will have somebody from the town's engineering department to contact you.
Great, great, perfect. Thank you. Good night? Or do I wait for a vote?
You probably want to wait for a vote, so you can rest tonight. You probably want to wait for a vote, so you can rest tonight without worrying about what we did.
The gentleman wants to speak.
Yes, you need to come up to the, to the mic.
I'm fine, we're here.
No, we're not fine.
We will get complaints.
I just want to ask Ms. Hoffman, did you do a zoning review or?
Okay, you need to talk at the mic so that we can catch you on TV, and you'll be, that'll be part of your permanent record.
I, I, we own property as well, not just there, I would think you were probably during your due diligence found out who owned that driveway before you bought access, bought the driveway.
I actually didn't buy the driveway, I bought the lot and was told that I was plowing the driveway, I accepted that responsibility.
But didn't you do due diligence to find out who was responsible for that driveway since it's access to your lot?
My attorney did look into it, and I'm trying to file the driveway that I'm told.
So you're not answering my question, what did your attorney say?
Well, wait, let's not get into back and forth.
For discussion, I would be buying the driveway, it didn't mean I owned the driveway.
Okay, wait, let's not get into a back and forth.
People's Court.
Yeah, right, this is not the People's Court.
All right, so the question...
Okay, yes, Mr. Franco. Okay, okay, so I'm hearing no other, or seeing no other hands raised for comments, I move approval, subject to, not subject to, but acknowledging that Mr. Kretner will look into the issue of the water seepage with the Building Department.
Did you want to attach a condition, subject to Police Department approval, since you don't have the report?
I might as well.
Yeah, yeah, might as well, okay. Subject to Police Department approval, question of approving, no, I'm sorry, question of approving a transfer of ownership of a license for Janice Hoffman to conduct and maintain an open-air parking lot at 195 Rawson Street, Mr. Franco.
For 20 automobiles, yeah.
For 20 automobiles, subject to Police, pending approval, Police approval. Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. You can rest, you can go home and rest now, or, and not worry about what's happening here. Okay, common victor license, entertainment, question of approving application of new common victor for Van Carrell Corporation doing business as Bottega Fiorentina at 315, at 313 B Harvard Street. Hours of operation, Monday to Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seating for 12 seats.
Good evening, my name is Vanessa Canella, I'm president of Van Carrell Corporation, we have purchased Bottega Fiorentina, and we want to apply for a new common virtualizer application, license, sorry.
Okay.
The business is going to remain the same, we're just changing ownership.
Right, and same menu, I see.
Same menu, same hours, same everything.
Okay, good. Any questions?
I'll just note that I don't see a report from the Health Department, so I...
It's, it's at the end, I think.
Yeah, we met with them today, Mr. Dai, we met, we met with them this morning.
Came up, I think, at the last page.
Okay, any other questions? So, seeing none, and this is not a public hearing, but assuming anyone in the audience wants to say something, they can raise their hand, seeing none. Question of approving the application of new common victor for Van Carrell Corporation doing business as Bottega Fiorentina at 313 B Harvard Street, all in favor, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
That vote incorporates the entertainment, which is the radio as well, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, please come and visit.
Thank you for waiting.
Just a question.
Sure.
I know that we have a fee to pay, when do we do that? For applying for the license?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
I know, but I should I talk with Tiffany?
Just check with Tiffany.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Okay, question of approving the application for a new entertainment license, okay, that, we already voted.
We've covered that, yeah.
Liquor license, all kinds, common victor, new, question of approving the application of new all kinds common victor license under Chapter 268, Acts of 2018 for Brookline Sky, doing business as Omari at 195 Washington Street. Proposed manager, record is Hank Lee Lin, hours of operation, Monday to Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., hours of alcohol service, Monday to Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., seating for 40 seats. Approving the application, as well as requests of approving the application of alternate manager Henderson Lee for Brookline Sky, and request for approving application for outdoor seating for 18 seats, and request of approving the application for a new entertainment license for Brookline Sky, radio playing Monday through Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. What do you have to add?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kayang Wong, I'm the attorney representing the applicant, Brookline Sky Inc., DBA Omari. I have here with me Mr. Hank Lin, he's the proposed manager, and also up here with, I hear Ms. Henderson Lee is the proposed alternate manager, they are also the principal owner of the applicant. Yes, we are applying for this DB license, all liquor license, entertainment license. The seating capacity, 40 indoor, 18 outdoor, I think it's the same as the previous operator at that location, it is 195 Washington Street, AKA 4-6 Station Street, it's the corner of the two streets. And each of them has more than 10 years' experience in the restaurant business, so they together have over 20, 25 years of experience, so, and they have, they've been owners of various restaurants and operating of various restaurants, so they have a lot of experience in the, in the business. And I don't have much to add, any questions from the board?
First of all, I, I assume you know that this is a restricted liquor license, it's limited to just this location, you can't transfer it to another location?
Correct.
Okay, okay, good. Any other questions?
I've got a couple of questions.
This is a public hearing, by the way, but we'll get to that public.
So, first, Hank's Lin is the proposed manager of record, I just want to make sure that, based on the material we got in the, in the packet, it looks like Mr. Lin may be employed by another restaurant now, I just want to make sure you know about the local restrictions on managers of record and that they're expected to be present 40 hours a week, assuming that the alternate manager is present, so just be aware that one of the two individuals, either the manager of record or the alternate manager, has to be there whenever liquor service is taking place.
Absolutely, basically Hank will be the proposed manager, he'll be there working full-time. For restaurant business, full-time means 60 hours a week or 70, so he'll be there most of the time.
And then, did anybody talk to you about the delivery plan? I had expressed a concern, and I just was going to attach a condition, but I wanted to make sure that I didn't catch you off-guard with the condition, assuming that a conversation didn't take place.
Yes, we did contact Mr. Tard Hiren, the Transportation Department, yeah, we had a conversation with him, and then there's an understanding, yeah, with the department.
So just for the edification of the public and the board members, the delivery plan was to pull a small delivery truck or van up onto Washington Street for a couple of minutes and deliver product that way during the middle of the day a couple times a week, and I expressed some concern that that seems like a traffic jam waiting to happen, so the condition I'm going to...
That intersection is pretty busy.
The condition I'm going to propose, obviously we'll have a vote on it, is that delivery vehicles can't park in the, in the traveling on other Washington Street or Station Streets, that they can either park in a legal parking spot, or they should use the designated loading zone on the south side of Washington Street, generally at the intersection of Station Street and Washington Street.
So that's across the street.
Sort of closer to White Place, so there's a designated spot there, and either park there, walk across the street, or park in a legal parking spot.
Miss Ketch.
I think that loading zone is for the UPS store, so yeah, definitely, we can, that's the, across the street.
Yeah, I think there's, yeah, there's a number of businesses that use it.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
And also, my, my friend told me that the way they operate for checking ID is unless you are, if you look like 17 years old, the employees, they, they don't have any discretion, they have to check everybody's ID.
Good.
So I walk in, they'll check my ID, so.
Mind you?
We, we know you guys.
Okay, I don't mind.
Okay.
I think we're all over the question.
It was more just a comment, and I'll be brief, it's just that, that that's a really great location, and other businesses have struggled there, so I, I encourage you to definitely do everything you can to promote the business, to get involved in the Brookline Village Business Association, to get to know the neighbors there, and to, you know, I, you know, assuming we, we vote on this and pass this tonight, just want to wish you all the best, and I'll do what I can to support you too.
Thank you very much.
It's, it's a great location, and I'd suggest you figure out why other businesses haven't succeeded there, and there may be some reason you can fix.
Or avoid.
They just be bad management on their part, I don't know, but, by the way, one thing that I've never seen and don't recall seeing in any other application is your hazard analysis and critical control points report, I found that very interesting, HACCP plan.
Yeah, HACCP, correct.
So is, is that something we require of?
I have no idea.
Really?
I don't recall seeing that ever.
Yeah, that's what we sushi, we offer, because we have sushi.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We provide that plan.
Okay, even sushi restaurants, I don't think I've seen with this, but...
Usually the Healthy Department will ask for coffee, so we...
Yeah, yeah, okay, very interesting. Anyway, anyway, any other questions?
Well, given that we're transferring a liquor license, I'd be interested to know about your meeting with Lieutenant Hayes or the liquor officer for the police, and sort of what you learned generally, and then what unique about Brookline did you, you learn about the service of alcohol?
Okay, actually, I spoke to Lieutenant a couple days ago, and he explained to me page by page, and he's very nice to me, my partner, so, actually, I know, you know, in town of the Brookline, they require all the server has to be certified tips certification, you know, and 24-hour, if you, the restaurant opens seven days, right, during the operational hour, you have to certify managers in the property to manage those kind, any kind of issue happened, and also the building require crowd managers, and to make sure all the path, like emergency, you know, exit, clear, and outdoor for the patio, we have to post non-smoking sign, and to warning people, you know, only drinking beyond this point, not outside of the patio, and also we have the security camera in every corner, so to make sure, you know, we save those footage, you know, for the review.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
We, I'll give you the, the warning that we give everybody that gets a liquor license in town, that we take it very seriously here, and we do underage things, we'll send in a, a college student who looks like they're 21, isn't, and they'll try and trick you and buy alcohol, and consider yourself warned, I hope we don't see you back here for a violation hearing.
Yeah, that's why we try to training all our server to check their ID if they doesn't look like 70 years old, because that's our responsibility and liability, so we got to care about, you know, those kind of license, because we are licensed holders.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I'll just note that you're right across three from the Neta Cannabis Store, that can be, it can be a problem or an opportunity. Figure out how it's an opportunity.
Yes, it says smoking pop make you hungry, so you got to go out and eat.
That's right, oh, they're not supposed to be smoking it around the store, but, for example, you know, one issue that comes up in this community is issue litter, and of course, it's not Neta necessarily, I mean, litter's a problem all over town, so, you know, the town's trying to get litter receptacles out in, in places, but I hope we make sure that you have litter receptacles, at least for your restaurant, so that you don't contribute to this problem.
Thank you.
Okay, any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I move approval of the application of all, of new all kinds common victor license, request for approving the application of alternate manager, proposed manager of record, Hank Lee Lin, alternate manager being Henderson Lee, request for application for outdoor seating for 18 seats, request of approving application for a new entertainment license, radio playing Monday through Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m.
You're going to include Mr. Franco's condition of loading?
Right, yeah, and conditioned on, Mr. Franco's condition on loading, which I'd like to repeat.
Now I got to get back to it.
For the record.
I got to get back to it, give me one moment here.
It's a traffic management plan for deliveries.
The condition is, delivery vehicles shall now park in the travel lanes on either Washington or Station Streets, delivery vehicle shall either park in a legal parking spot or in the designated loading zone on the southbound side of Washington Street, generally at the intersection of Washington and Station Streets. For context, that's right in front of the Village Works.
And, and I didn't see you writing it down, but it will be in our board minutes, which you can see online, so it's important that you...
Actually, I received a copy, an email, so that's really clear, you know, requirement.
Great.
I also received an email from Mr. Hiren.
Yeah, so, there was conversation between staff and, and the applicant before this meeting, so everybody came in tonight knowing exactly what was going to happen.
Except me.
How rare.
Okay, question of approving all those things, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night, gentlemen.
Sure. And we go.
Thank you.
Okay, next and final, public hearing, and again, I apologize for the lateness, but with things going on. Change in DBA, question of approving application of change of DBA from Three Treasurers Concept during business as Gourmet Garden to Three Treasurers Concept DBA Zing Hunan Kitchen, 1032 Commonwealth, and that includes question of approving the application of change of DBA, question of approving the application of Zing Hunan Kitchen for a change of proposed officer's stock or ownership interest, question of approving the application from Zing Hunan Kitchen for a change of manager from Harong Zutu Tu Zixiu Chang, I apologize if those pronunciations were not, were not correct, and approving application of alternate manager Kater Baudisare for Three Treasurers Concept doing business as Zing Hunan Kitchen, 1032 Commonwealth Avenue, and question of approving the application from Zing Hunan Kitchen for a change of hours from Monday to Saturday, 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 a.m., Sunday, 12:00 noon to 12:30 a.m., to hours of operation, Sunday to Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. All days closed, 3:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. Alcohol serving hours, Monday to Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Sunday, 12:00 noon to 10:00 p.m. So it looks like you're reducing your hours?
Yeah, it looks like they're adding to the front and taking away from the back, so it'll be open a little earlier and close a little.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Half an hour earlier.
Okay, any, any questions?
No, I'll just comment that I don't live very far away, so I've eaten at your... No, I'll just comment that I don't live very far away, so I've eaten at your restaurant a number of times, I'm probably the only person in there with gray hair and white skin. Everyone else is Asian. Food is excellent, I've really enjoyed it, have a few favorites, of course, but, and the service has been fine, it's very busy, you're very, very, very busy. So I'd love to hear some tips of getting in there when it's not so busy, but I've enjoyed it.
On that recommendation, I'll probably drop by and see how good the food is.
Very spicy, some dishes are very spicy.
I like spicy, a certain type spicy though, I'll be careful though. Any other comments, questions? This is a public hearing, anyone in the public like to make a comment? I don't see any.
I'll, I'll ask my, my standard question about, I'd be curious to know what the, how the meeting with the liquor license officer in town went, and, and what you learned about the unique rules about the service of alcohol in Brookline.
So I'll let the manager, proposed manager, and alternate manager answer that question.
Perfect.
Hello everyone, my name is Ju Chao Chang, I'm the new manager of the restaurant. I took the tips in class from the Brookline Police, they recommend a teacher to me, and I just go to take class, and I learn they're all Brookline regulation about their alcohol service, it's like, for me, and, like, for every new employee, I have to train in them and ask them, get the E-tips online, so I just, I also ask them and check every customer ID, because they know our restaurant is located in nearby the Boston University, so a lot of the colleges, students, yeah, so some students is from the international, so I tell them and they have to check every student ID, if they don't have an, or, you know, sometimes the students said, I forget, and, or I, I don't bring, and say, some customers say, oh, I, I come to here every day, so, yeah, but I just ask them, and they have to check every time, and for everyone, if they don't have, and they must not serve alcohol for them. And I also tell them if some student, if some customer, if they appear some drunk, or sometimes if they lose balance when they walk in, that you, they have to stop their serving, and I also, probably, any alcohol game, like, you know, some young people, they love their drinking game, and I also ask them, don't do that, and, yeah, so generally, and so the students is always love their beer, they rarely drink the, like, some very high level alcohol, anyway, I told every employee also alter manager, sometimes, and if alter manager on duty, I also ask them to do same thing, check the ID and recognize and the real ID and the fake ID, yeah, so.
Thank you for that, I mean, you were paying attention, nobody ever brings up the prohibition on drinking games. You did a good job. I think you and I may be the only two people that have read the regulations recently. I'll give you the same warning that we gave to the previous applicant who got the, a liquor license, that we do do underage things, we try and trick you, so just be aware that we will send in an underage student who looks like they're over twenty-one, they're not, and I hope you don't, we don't see you here for a violation hearing, either because you fail a sting, or because you serve an underage BU student or college student, or Brookline High student, for that matter, in the future, so, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't see the approval from the health department, is that here?
Should be on the last page.
Our new system is a little cumbersome, so bear with me.
I think it was inserted on the last, last document in this group.
I'm wondering whether it's possible to go back and, you know, change that first page, which lists the approvals and the pending, so that we're not sitting here, you know, flipping through, trying to find, I'm trying to not rely, not rely on my paper version, you know what I'm saying?
So it, it's the last two pages, dated September sixth, so...
Do you have a page number on that?
It is page...
Six-six-seven.
It's six-six-one on the online version, but I...
So I don't know how to get to that, all right, okay.
So, it's the standard conditions, you know, comply with the health code.
As long as it's there, then I'm fine.
Is this everyone, are you all, like, family work there? This is great that you have so many people here, I love it.
I impress on all of the, all my clients, it's very important to show up for the meeting.
Right, right.
Thank you.
They're, they're good friends, we've been a partner together for quite a while.
This is the team.
Yes.
All right, great, awesome.
It's good to show up because it's good free advertising on VIG TV, and people do watch that.
And yes, it's gonna be uploaded onto YouTube before we...
Okay, question of approving change of DBA, and that includes change of DBA from, let's see, Three Treasurers Concept DBA Gourmet Garden to Three Treasurers Concept DBA Zing Hunan Kitchen, also includes change in officer's stock or ownership interest, also includes change of manager, from Harong Zu to Zixiu Chang, I hope I didn't butcher that too much, and approving associate manager Kater Bladishare Sari for Three Treasurers Concept DBA, approving the application of alternate manager Kater Baudisari, and finally, question of change of hours, which we talked about earlier, so, those four approvals, I move approval, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go back to our warrant articles.
As you remember, good evening, so we have some fall town meeting warrant articles to come back to that were postponed earlier tonight. The first one is Article One, which we have in every town meeting, in case there are unpaid bills from prior fiscal year, town meeting would be required to approve that. Happy to report there are no unpaid bills, so my recommended motion under this article is no action.
Okay, all in favor, Mr. Franco?
You've had a public hearing, of course.
Oh, sorry. For the record, this is a public hearing, any comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
That was for recommended vote of no action. Chair voting yes to say no.
Article Two, we put an article on the warrant if there are any collective bargaining agreements that are outstanding for the year, we currently have police open, but we don't have anything that will be ready in time for town meeting, so the current recommendation under Article Two is no action.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing, any members of the public have any comments, questions with respect to this Article Two? Seeing none, I move approval for, what, no action?
Correct, because there are no, there are no agreements that are ready for approval, so.
Move approval, or move no action. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, Article Ten is an article that was requested by the moderator after he reached out to some town meeting members and former members of the Committee on Campaigns. This committee has been dormant for several years, I think Frank Farlowe was really the one kind of keeping this group very active. One of the recommendations that they had was to create the forms that candidates for campaigns fill out with town clerk's office, and so after surveying some members of town meeting, the recommendation is to dissolve the committee, so this warrant article allows, because the committee is formally in the bylaws, so this would remove it from the bylaws. So the recommendation under this article is favorable action.
Okay, any questions from the board, any questions from the audience? Seeing none?
Just for the record, I took a look to see when appointments expired on this group, they all expired at least five years ago.
Yeah, I think, I think the moderator was, you know, a lot of people kept asking, when are they getting renewed, and kind of knowing that this group is dorm, is dormant, it's probably best to just eliminate it.
Yeah, there's been no report as required, and they're charred for at least five years, and we've dealt with revitalizing the campaign finance laws in recent town meetings, and there are other groups that are focused on this, and it seems like this is unnecessary based on the fact that there's others doing the work that they were empowered to do.
Okay, good. I move favorable action, Article Ten, Campaigns Committee, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Was that correct, yeah, you hesitated.
You're saying yes to say no.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And that concludes our business for tonight.
Just wanted to make sure everybody knew we were trying to sweet campaign finance.